This isn't an official meeting. David?
Yes.
The mics are on, aren't they? Steve, are you recording this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is he back there?
Yeah, my screen.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
It's recorded in live.
Because the TV's on. Okay, so.
We gotta do call to order, roll call.
It's just recording?
No, it's going out live.
It is?
Yeah.
There are hundreds of people.
Your best behavior.
There's nobody watching right now.
There's hundreds of people who want to see this.
Never know.
Do I have to?
Good question.
Mr. Rayner.
Absolutely.
Missed you.
Okay, welcome, everybody.
I think I've seen you all.
No, no formal agenda. I want to run through, I want to run through a quick little overview and tell you what we are going to do here. We've got a hard stop, obviously, at seven for our scheduled planning board meeting. So again, this is being recorded. It is available to public meeting. There will be no public testimony at this meeting, so we are not going to take any public testimony. This is a work session. We're going to go through the process. We're going to do 30 minutes on the ordinance. We're going to have Matt available if there's questions regarding the ordinance. But we want to have 30 minutes on the ordinance. The process is going to be to discuss the topics, come up with some ideas on what we want to change, if we want to change this, if we want to change that, come up with some lists. Task staff with putting that list together. Come back to the October Planning Board meeting. We will then present it again in a public forum and at that point, take public testimony and then make a recommendation to city council and go from there. So this, nothing is going to be decided here, other than avenues that we want to take and move on from there. And then the second side of the 30 minutes would be architectural design review, reviewing process, reviewing roles and making sure that everybody understands kind of where things fall and how things gel. Does that sound good, Liz? I'll point to Liz just as the, as the host of, or the chair of the Architectural Design Review. Jay and her are both chairs and Jay's unfortunately not going to be able to make it. Does everybody know each other? I don't know if we can, Doug, can you start that way?
Dr. Proctor, ADR, also architect with Turner.
So Doug, you got to pull that microphone a little closer because the millions and millions listening are going to want to know what's going on. You don't have to be too close, but.
Doug Proctor with Turner.
I'm Claude Jantiam. I'm an architect here in town.
Liz Triffey-Hengen. I'm an historic preservation consultant and co-chair of Design Review.
Merle Forbes Architectural Review Committee, retired architect.
Brad Neal?
Yes.
Welcome. We do this every week, so. Wednesday.
Alec Bass, Assistant State Line.
Professor Tremblay, Administrative Specialist.
Anne Marie Skinner, City Planner.
I am the Chair of the Planning Board, Rich Woodfin.
Earl Pierce.
Teresa Rosenberg.
Magix, I think.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't think about that, but go ahead.
Amanda Savage.
Jeff Santa Cruz.
David Fox.
Brett Todd.
Okay, so again, process wise, Liz, if I could throw it to you with your letter. I think everybody's seen Liz's letter. I don't know if there's any other topics on the letter that you, we've talked about or anybody's brought up or any other things that you'd want to throw in there. And again, very informal, so if no, we can move around and go from there.
Okay. Well, I just want to emphasize that even though I initially wrote the letter, everyone on the ADR committee endorsed it at our meeting in August, I think it was. And there are four primary points that come out in the letter. I'll just quickly run through them. One is, we felt there were some terms that would benefit from the definition, terms such as the development program and vitality, vibrancy. We thought it would be very useful and appropriate to ensure there were references to the Main Street guidelines. These were adopted by the Planning Board in 2018 and they're intended to guide alterations that occur within this same district. There was, we found the boundaries somewhat confusing, whether or not State Street was included or not included. And we also suggested that the district be carried farther to the south where there are some underutilized lots that really could benefit from this tool. And then the final point was that we felt there should be, there should be references inserted to historic buildings, affirming that the history and the cultural significance of downtown is important to the community. And this would do nothing more than align this zoning amendment with other documents that we currently govern us and do talk about historic buildings and the value that they are within the community.
So from a, working my way back up from the bottom up, because that's usually the way I do things, but from the historical buildings identifying, is it, is it the intent? Or, and I read, when I was reading through that, I wasn't sure if the intent was to identify buildings and say, this is a historical building, this isn't, this isn't, this is, this is. Or, or more generic saying, North Main Street from here to here, or South Main Street from here to here. Is there any thought in the identification process, being able to, to point at buildings and say, these are, these are important buildings and need to be preserved?
Well, happily, that work has already been done for us because downtown is on the National Register of Historic Places and has been for 20 odd years, a city-sponsored project. So within that district, there are buildings that contribute and there are buildings that do not contribute. So that pretty much lays it out, I think, for purposes of this zoning amendment.
Okay. Council Todd, I was going to throw it to you next if you had any, any specific content related, down in weeds type of issues. Sorry, I caught you off guard and I apologize for that. But I know we had talked before, just one-on-one talk before regarding some points that you had and some concern points that you had. So if you've got some, maybe you can lay those out and we can kind of dig into those and then roll from there.
Sure, and I think Mr. Walsh can help too as we go through this process because I think part of the, as we are aware of, we basically as a body decided to simply send this back to city council without a chance for review. And, and from that, I think there's maybe some, some issues that came up in terms of things that aren't included in there, that didn't get a chance to be explained as to why they're not there. And I think that it would be a great opportunity to have those explanations given. And, and you know, again, this group will come up with questions that they want to ask.
From a process perspective on your side, again, the council tends to look at things quick and roll through them. So things are either put on the consent agenda and you move right through them. The intent on this is to come back with some, some adjustments to the, to the ordinance that, again, that we hash out here, right?
Yeah, my thought was that, given the conversation that we had at our March and April Planning Board meetings on this topic, that we would have an opportunity to kind of look closely at the way the ordinance is currently drafted and accepted and make sure that we're still comfortable with that. And the council voted for that, basically. I mean, that's why we've had this referred back to us. If I, if I look at, for example, the master plan is, I think that Liz really kind of referenced everything that came up, I guess, as an issue. But, you know, if we look at section 8B1 of the master plan, it states as the goal to safeguard the heritage of Concord by providing for the protection of structures and areas representing significant elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history. Section 8B2 says the goal is to encourage the rehabilitation of historic buildings that reflects and respects each building's historic character. And section 8B6 of the master plan states the goal of to remove any unintended impediments to the rehabilitation and/or reuse of historic properties inherent in the city's land use regulations and building codes. So those are just some examples. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all comfortable as a group, you know, having a CUP ordinance in place with the language that we felt comfortable was in, you know, kind of married to those sections of the master plan, as well as, you know, that everyone on this body would be able to feel comfortable saying, yeah, we can hear an individual action, we can make a decision one way or another to either say, no, this, this is excluded and here's why, or yes, we, we feel comfortable with this and here's why.
Right, and again, you know, some guidelines that we can go with, but not, not so strict or not so much detail that we are locked out from, from taking it under, under, you know, advisement, basically, and being able to render a decision on it. I mean, the intent on some of these is to not intentionally make them vague, but you want, you want some gray area that brings up the discussion to the planning board and gives us the ability to kind of bat it, bat it around and talk about it.
Right, it's finding that balance.
It is.
You know, where you, where you want, you don't want to have, you want to have enough gray area, but not so much that, you know, you could be subject to a potential lawsuit later or anything else that someone felt that they, the decision wasn't rendered in the way they.
So do you think we've got the ability to come up with some language that will allow us to? I heard from several people that they were concerned that this change would institute demolition of buildings downtown to rebuild them in bigger buildings. And, and I want to explore that a little bit with the group and say, you know, I don't know that the ordinance, because, you know, gives us enough legs to, to say that's not going to happen, but it very well might. I just am not 100% sure. And again, if we've got the ability for an applicant come for us and say, we want to rip down the building across the street that's next to the Eagle Hotel and this is what we're going to put in, we're going to put this and this and this. We want to be able to look at that and evaluate it on its merits and, and go from there.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I think that's the, the issue is that we're kind of in new territory with this CUP. I mean, this, this ordinance has existed for the Opportunity Corridor already. With, I will mention also, with, without those definitions that we're requesting to, or you've requested to have included. But I don't believe, and Mr. Walsh, I think you already stated this, there has been no applications for this ordinance as to the Opportunity Corridor District yet. In other words, no one has tried to apply for this yet there. So we're on new territory. Would that be safe?
So there, there's been a conditional use permit to allow buildings in a section of the Opportunity Corridor Performance District located between Hills Avenue and Loudon Road on the west side of 93 to go from 40 feet to, I believe it's 80 feet. And that has been in place since the ordinance was adopted in November of 2001. It's not been used, but some of the language relative to the height, it's a conditional use permit to go from 80 to 90 in the Central Business Performance District, was parroted from that existing language that's already there. So for example, in Liz's letter on, on her section two here that talks about specific amendments, the language there about buildings shall only obstruct the view of the State House dome to the minimum extent necessary. That's existing language that was copied from that, that language elsewhere already in the ordinance. So that's not a new concept. It was just, you know, it'd been in there for 23 years. We just duplicated it there.
Okay.
As an example.
And then, so while we're talking about not boundaries, but boundary, boundary question regarding a little clarity on the boundaries, again, I think some of it is a little vague. Do we want to include South, South Main and part of that into the, into the, into the ordinance? And I'm throwing it out to you, Matt. I don't, you don't have to answer, but I, any.
I guess the question is, so.
Where do you cut it?
The amendment, so when we were here in April, we had a conver, the original proposal from the developer, let's back up. The original proposal from the developer was to remove all the language about dome obstruction in the ordinance and just allow it, not even deal with it. And then to create a conditional use permit to go from 80 feet to 90 feet in the Central Business Performance, which is the purple area on the map. And when staff started looking at that based on the public testimony we got in April and looking at the nuances of trying to implement things, we ended up saying, no, we think it's a bridge too far to eliminate all the dome obstruction language. Rather create a conditional use permit to allow it on a case-by-case basis. And then also create a separate conditional use permit to deal with the height issue in the Central Business Performance. But as we looked at that, there's language about height and dome also in the, in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District, which is this section, which is between Hills Avenue and Loudon Road, which is why the bubble kind of goes like that. So in this area, there is, there's language about, that talked about dome obstruction in the, in the, in the OCP district, as well as there's already the concept of being able to go from 40 to 80 feet in the OCP. So when staff got into it, which is why we ended up with a seven-page ordinance amendment, we said, well, we really should deal with all of this, create conditional use permits to address that. And we went forward and did it that way. And I don't know if the chair wants to go through Liz's comments one by one or how you, how you want to do it. That's kind of where it came from. I realized at the time, you know, the memo that staff provided to the board in April talked about, well, do you want to limit the concept of the, the 80 to 90 foot to only a section of the, the Central Business Performance, maybe the east side of Main Street, between Pleasant and Loudon? I know there was some discussion about down here on South Main Street and maybe ending up too high. And when staff ended up looking at that, we ended up being concerned about having a really tortured zoning map about what that would look like and where you can do this. And then we were also concerned about spot zoning to a certain extent. So that's why we ended up doing what we did. But I guess, if it helps, you know, to go through Liz's letters here or comments here, I guess I would offer the first one. So if I'm on her second page, the building and structure shall only obstruct the view of the State House dome to the minimum extent necessary to accomplish the development program as approved by the planning board. That's language that's already been in the ordinance and in that conditional use permit to go from 40 to 80 in the Opportunity Corridor District. So we just repeated that for the new language for the 80 to 90 in the CDP. The development program to us is, is basically what the developer's looking to do. You know, it's, it's the proposed uses, proposed square footage, those sorts of things that are typical of part of a development program.
So through comprehensive development meetings and plans that are presented?
No, it's common vernacular in, in real estate to say, oh, the development program is, okay, how many buildings are you doing? How big are those buildings? What's the uses of the buildings? So that's normally what the development program means. Yeah. The second section, the design of buildings and structures which obstruct the State House dome shall be, provide a positive contribution to the architectural character of the downtown Central Business District, Opportunity Corridor, as well as the city skyline. Again, that's not a new concept. That language was also copied from the existing conditional use permit for the OCP that's been in place for 23 years. So that's there. I know there's reference to the Main Street Design Guideline. Our point of view from staff was, all of the city's regulations stand on their own relative, if they're referenced or not. So for example, there's design guidelines that ADR uses from 1991, which need to be updated at some point, but we use them. And, and just because we're not saying the Main Street Design Guide, the 2018, doesn't mean it's not applicable. So our point of view was, even if you don't mention it, it's still there. Question, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So to me, there's a difference between the regulation and the guide.
Yep.
Regulation is site plan and not, the guide is a guide. I think we need to pull it into the ordinance to make sure that they're following it and not just saying, well, that's a guide. We don't necessarily need to follow it. You know, I mean, I think, I agree that it's stronger if it's specifically referenced in there and then it's really called out. Whereas, you know, some of the other documents, the master plan and stuff, yes, they're there, but a lot of times those become a little vague when they're used. Whereas site plan regs, you know, although are hard and fast, this is what they are. This is what you must do.
And if that's what the board wants to do, that's fine with us. We just felt like we didn't reference any other regulations because to us, it's intuitive and staff reviews it to make sure it complies with the guidelines as well as the regs.
I just think this one, because it specifically states architectural and other features of this specific district, it's a little different than some of the general documents that are applicable across the city.
May I have a question?
Yes, Teresa.
I just sometimes, and I read a lot of this stuff all over the place. I sometimes think if you aren't giving definition, you all know it's implied. But when we're not here and you're not here, how are the next people who do economic development or planning know it's implied? So it always seems to me, if you can at least say what's referenced so you know actually what you are considering implied. So I would, I would agree with you that it probably does need to be referenced. And back to the one before, I mean, I'm one who spends my life looking at definitions and things et cetera. I mean, to me, I did not know the development program was what you said, which is what the developer's basically proposing. I wasn't aware, I probably, this is my, I'm not doing my homework, but I always thought the city had some sort of development plan or develop, but when I say program, maybe to me, I wasn't, I'm not, that's an ambiguous word to me. So I had agreed when I read it initially, not having seen any of Liz's comments, and I went through and read lying things. It was definition, definition, definition. What's the definition? So to me, I don't know that it has to be rigid, but at least you have to kind of know what you're talking about. If what you're talking about here is the develop, what the developer's proposing, then we need to say so. If it's a development plan for the state, I mean, for the city, we just need to say so because I wasn't sure what was implied. That's my only thought.
And the question would be, is that a term in the, the construction, build, the build, design build phases and the people that would come to us, would they know that?
Well, they may, but. Whether they do or not, if they do, if they've got a definition of what that is, then I don't know why we know.
It's why we have planners.
Say so. Yeah.
Chairman, if I could just follow up on that. I guess my question is too, is the word development program used anywhere in our regulations? Because if it's not, it's not really tied together in what that term means in terms of site plan regs, et cetera. So it may need a definition just from that standpoint.
Okay. Matt?
Let me keep going?
Please continue, yeah.
All right.
The visual image, I think, is where we left off. That's the definition. Another definition.
Correct, the visual image needs to be created and provided, sightlines, such as seen by the Merrimack River, the visual image of the city skyline. Again, you know, the skyline's visible from places in downtown. I don't know if, if you want to specify from where, then that's fine. But we kind of took it as the visual, the skyline's important from everywhere, everywhere you view it. But if it's one, you want to prioritize 93 or the Merrimack River, then that's up to the board.
Thoughts, Liz?
If I could just say, if, as long as we have the Main Street Guides or Design Guidelines inserted, I think it takes care of that anyway.
Okay. Moving on, so the next one was number, it's not number three, but it's the box, third box, results in the use or reuse of real estate which will enhance vitality or vibrancy of the downtown Central Business District. And the comment is to define vitality and vibrancy. Frankly, to staff, we felt that those were self-evident and, and wanted to provide some room for the board to make a judgment call there. There's other statutes that play into these concepts. I think RSA 79E references vitality and vibrancy, which is a statute relative to tax, tax incentives to redevelop certain areas of the city, which include downtown. So that's, that's, that's the staff's point of view. The board may do whatever.
And again, I think that's one of the ones that I'd like some vagueness and some, and the ability for us to determine that the catch housing project, if you stuck it down next to Arts Alley, isn't going to be in the best interest of where it wants to be. Arguably not anywhere downtown, but, you know, we want to have a little bit of leeway in some of those things to be able to, to kind of say, yeah, this, this is a great project, but it doesn't belong on Main Street as a, as a focal point of the downtown corridor. So I'm fine with leaving that as, as vague as vitality and vibrance of the downtown Central Business District.
The fourth one, and I think we only have seven minutes left, is the design of buildings and structures which exceed the height limit shall respect the surrounding vernacular architecture and views of the State House dome unless the CUP obstructing the, the State House dome has been otherwise approved by the planning board. So the way the staff's interpreting that is, it's only applicable to, all projects have to respect the surrounding vernacular architecture. The views of the State House dome are the things that are subject to unless the CUP's been granted. So I think that's just a nuance in how it's actually read in the paragraph.
Thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think again, as Liz said, if we put the Design Guide reference in here, it kind of covers that because the Design Guide reference talks about the interplay between the different architectures and overall feel of Main Street.
Thoughts? Okay. All right, Matt.
Okay. The next one is that buildings or structures which exceed the height limit shall not be located at properties that have more than 15 feet of frontage on North State Street or South State Street or be in those portions of the Central Business District located west of North State Street. So what we ended up doing is, this is not the best map in the world, but first and foremost, there is a little nub of the Central Business District that's located to the west of State Street. So we wanted to call that out and say, it's a no-go zone because everything that's around it is, is two stories or so. And then we also, again, going back to differences about where, what areas are going to be and what areas are going to be out, since everything in the Central Business District is eligible, we said, well, we don't want it on State Street because of the reasons we talked about in April whereby you're budding this neighborhood that is a two, two and a half story tall neighborhood. So we said, well, we don't want this cart blonde through here, especially if you think about the project that was just approved at 6th North State Street, the catch project, which will be 80 feet and will be very tall. So we said, well, there are some cases where properties have full frontage through here, one of them being the Capital Center for the Arts, the other one being the Eagles Club, for example. So we said, well, we want to make those properties eligible to be able to go taller if it means redevelopment for, in the case of something like the Eagles Club, or it helps the Capital Center for the Arts become more conforming under the ordinance. And so we said, well, let's only say, if you have more than 15 feet of frontage on North State Street, South State Street, you can't get the CUP to go from 80 to 90. If you have 15 feet or less, 15 feet or less, you could. So we were trying to create a carve-out there to allow other properties that might have the primary frontage on Main Street still be eligible to, to get the CUP to go from 80 to 90.
Okay. So 15 feet of frontage isn't, isn't.
It's a driveway.
Left to right.
It's a driveway.
Not even.
Yeah.
If a property is 15 feet of frontage or less.
I think I counted two. And I think I named them.
So, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to note, the second part that's on page four of that is, would some of the properties south of Hills Ave, say between Hills Ave and Store Street, specifically on the east side, potentially benefit? Because they are subject to high difference in elevation between Main and Stores and there are some lower one-story buildings that certainly could be. there are some lower one-story buildings that certainly could be ripe for redevelopment through that area.
I'm sorry, Jeff, which side of the road on South State Street?
The east, so that side, yep. So, basically between Stores and Main Street, from Hills down to Stores.
Yep, so those are all in. So, if it's, if it's purple on the screen, it's in unless it's over here, westerly of State Street, or has more than 15 feet of frontage on North or South State Street.
Okay, I guess, I misunderstood when I read Liz's letter. I did kind of the same thing. I was like, "Why not those properties?" I see, I remember the old Penny Petu travel. That'd be a perfect little...
So, to give you a hypothetical example, if the Employment Security Building was coming through today, they, but they have more than 15 feet of frontage on State Street, so no, they wouldn't be able to go, they wouldn't have been able to go to 90. But that's, so that's what we were trying to balance, because this neighborhood over here is relatively short buildings, you know, very residential, it's one and a half to two and a half stories.
And we're saying 10 feet makes a difference.
We're not trying to have this jarring visual impact of residential two and a half story to, you know, eight story tower, nine story tower.
An 80?
Yeah, yeah.
But again, the intent is to, is to put these in place, guidelines and ordinance, and if you want to do a building, if you wanted to do Employment Security tomorrow and started the project, you'd be able to come in and apply for it. You'd just have to go through the process to get an exception, right?
A variance.
A variance.
You'd have to get a variance, yep. So, that's that one.
Exception wasn't the right word, but I couldn't think of it off the top of my head. So, the next one?
And then I think the last one is, is about the, the buildings involving demolition. And so, I think, I don't want, Liz, if I'm misinterpreting this, let me know, but it sounds like you're okay with the rest of the language that's there, but you're trying to add number, Roman numeral, J, Roman numeral one, and J, Roman numeral two.
Exactly, and it's paraphrasing or paralleling language that appears in 79E and similar types of documents.
So, on, on the first one, the reason why I didn't put historic in there and tried to write something that applied to all demolition was a couple of different things, but primarily with respect, going back to this was created, done so to try and create a pathway for the Phoenix Hall project. There was an awful lot of discussion about whether or not the EMP Hotel at, at Phoenix Hall site is historic, and the Heritage Commission had two meetings on that. And ultimately, the Heritage Commission said no, but there's a lot of discussion because it was a contributing structure to the historic district that Liz referenced earlier, and there was some concern by some of whether or not that's a historic building or not. I was trying to steer clear of those concerns and say, "Let's look at all buildings and demonstrate to us, developer, that if you're tearing it down because you want, and you're going to go to 90, that there's a really good reason why you're tearing it down." And, and thinking about the projects that have happened in downtown, the buildings that we have, that have been torn down or replaced, the Sears Block was an older building, I think some would view as a historic building, but it was beyond saving. It had been a botched demolition. The Bindery Building, I think people look at that as a historic building, not the greatest example, because it had some original architecture and then a very modern building out front. How would the board view that? Employment Security, if Employment Security was eligible, it's a 1958 mid-century modern building. Some people are going to say that's historic, you can't tear it down. I don't know if people really want to, would be sad about the loss of that building. It depends on your point of view. The Sando block site, which I know Liz and I worked on together, those had historic, they had older buildings there as one of the sites of the original, some of those buildings were the original, one of the original auto dealers in town, if my memory serves, those were torn down. I didn't want to deal with those types of situations and put the board in a conundrum. I'd rather say, demonstrate to us why you're tearing the building down, if there's a legitimate reason why you're tearing the building down, and that the building's not usable as it is, and so on and so forth, and not broach those issues. That's, that's why it was drafted the way it was drafted.
And, and I, I don't know if we disagree or agree on it. I mean, I don't know your thoughts or anybody else on the board, but I want that ability to be able to look at the E and R, E and R Hotel? E and R Hotel? EMP Hotel, that's been vacant for decades and burned out from decades before. I want it, I want to look at that as an option to either redevelop or figure out a best use and move forward, not have it, "You can't do this, and you can't do that," but give us the ability to, to hear out the applicant, come to the, you know, public hearings and give testimony, and then make a decision based on that. And I know that, that we'd like to have everything regulated and put into neat boxes, but sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
I was afraid that the confusion and concern about historic might hold up a worthy project from going forward, a Sears Block-esque project, if that was a, a hard and fast requirement.
Okay.
That's what, you know...
And again, because of the historic, just the word, it's going to be this, I'm going to have to do this, I'm going to have to demonstrate this, I'm going to have to go through all these hoops to, to do this, which we want some of that, but...
So... And if you're going to add anything for historic, you absolutely have to define what is meant by historic.
I would just...
Yeah, and 79E, for instance, does do that. So, that language...
Provides the definition?
Yeah, the language does exist in similar things. When ADR was looking at this, we felt that the loophole was if something was sufficiently deteriorated, A and P being a great example, Bindery being another. So, Sunels were not determined to be significant in the first place, that the inability to rehab something in a reasonable, for a reasonable cost and in a reasonable way, would be the out that would give a developer a way to redevelop the site.
Let me ask you...
But not inadvertently putting at risk, the possible risk of the historic buildings succumbing to something that has double the square footage and is going to be, to have the potential for a lot more revenue.
So, do you think that the Heritage Commission as a, as a body that's here, and I know it's legislated from the state level, but do you think there's an opportunity for us to, to relook at their piece of this and be able to task them a little bit more with some of these particular projects, to review them, to hold a hearing on, to get public testimony, to get input from that side of the fence? Because I've sat on the Heritage Commission for a couple of years, and it's, it's good, but it doesn't have any teeth with a lot, a lot of the, a lot of the things that people want to do. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here to, to kind of put some teeth into it or put them into, into play, basically, on a development that's coming in to redevelop a new property that's going to have to rip, rip a building down. And they have to do it, I know, but I'm just wondering if there's a piece missing on the Heritage side.
The state statute provides a lot of authority for Heritage Commissions, but it is up to the local municipality to determine how much authority from the state statute is going to be granted to the Heritage Commission. So, that would be a question for City Council and how much they want to change.
I'm just, I'm wondering if you think there's a step missing in, you know, in the review piece?
I always think it's beneficial to involve the Heritage Commission and solicit their comments.
Okay.
But typically, it would be an advisory capacity to municipal boards.
Right, okay. I'm not, I'm not used to looking this way. I'm always looking this way, but I, I do, I know, I send some hands up. I don't do head 'em up first, but Teresa?
I have a couple of thoughts about this.
You got to go quick, so...
Sorry, my thoughts are, I mean, I have to tell you, I was involved in the drafting of 79E, and I feel like leaving this as ambiguous as it is, I understand what Matt's saying, give me the flexibility, but I also look at what Liz drafted, which says to me, you've got plenty of flexibility there. It seems to me, as a city that was supportive of 79E way back when, that is, to me, when I moved here, was embracing and really in the forefront of embracing its, its culture, its heritage, its buildings, et cetera, that I feel like we're going backwards in some ways if we leave this as ambiguous as it is. I read this, and it sure says to me, there's not much that would come before us that we would have to deny, because, you know, the rehabilitation of the financial hardship should be approved that, most people approve that, the project, you know, the project results on use or reuse, et cetera. I mean, it just, it doesn't, it seems to me, it's still stating what I thought our values were as a city, that we wanted to maintain what we could of the historic character. And I look at Steve Dubry, who's putting the Concord Coach in, I mean, that's our cultural and character. So, I didn't see, when I read it originally, I kind of went, "Where's historic, with the whole thing?" I thought, "Where's historic in here?" I think by leaving it out, it just seems to me, we're making a very different, in some ways, policy decision, even though I understand the nuances. But if I'm out there, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing what you just said, I'm reading going, "Oh," you know, "I'm not sure we value historic anymore." It just doesn't sit right with me.
Okay.
I'll be real quick. I agree with Teresa. I like the language that Liz has in there. I think it still gives us flexibility, but has a little bit of teeth if we need it. And my second one is, we have ADR who kind of gives us recommendations on architectural and certain pieces. Why can't we say in this district that historic Heritage Commission gives us advisory input that we, as planning board, can then use to make decisions in this specific instance?
And I think that was one of my points.
Yeah, and rather than giving them extra authority...
What other role can they play? Because we never hear from the Heritage Commission.
We don't necessarily...
We never hear anything from the Heritage, who sits on the Heritage Commission? Brett, do you, no?
No.
Do we have a...
Ken, Jenny Kretovic for the council.
No, but who sits for planning?
Nobody.
I don't think anybody does.
Who wants to sit for planning?
Right now, the Heritage Commission is fully, it's seven members and seven members.
But there's supposed to be a planning board member.
No, there is not.
Oh. Well, why did we always have one?
Because it just worked out that way.
Because perhaps in the past, it did.
No, I thought it said in the ordinance that you had to play any board, you have to have a council.
Yeah, I'm getting to your point.
Who sits for council?
I just have this discussion.
On Heritage.
On Heritage, yeah, sorry, Jeff.
No, that's okay. I was just going to say, so we don't, I don't think we need to go to City Council to change what Heritage Commission's doing, because we're not asking them to provide anything more than advisory they're already doing. I think what we want to do is make it specific in the language here, that in this district, we're going to solicit direct input, rather than, you know, they do their thing, we do our thing, separate of each other.
So, on this particular point, because there seems to be a little dissent, a little movement around it, I mean, what, what's our recommendation? Do we have a recommendation to, to give to Matt and to the staff to say, "We'd like to see this tightened up with the following language," which was just what Teresa's...
I like Liz's language, with the addition, if we can somehow get in there, that in this zone, that we're going to specifically ask for Heritage Commission to weigh in under this item.
With this height? I mean, that's important, too.
Right, right, but with, under this ordinance. How's that? How's, under this ordinance, that we're going to specifically get their input from an advisory on their read of this.
Does that, does that put us in a corner at all as far as...
I think it does. You're, I, I think you're, I think you're ceding your authority, and then I also am worried about the 65-day clock to deal with an application. And, and, and the experience that we had with 79 relative to Phoenix Hall, and the way that that is worded, I foresee it as being a challenge, and, you know, I have concerns about it.
So, I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation that, that that particular item be brought back on the October meeting to discuss a little bit further at the board level and then get some public testimony and some public input. Is that logical?
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I was just going to say, when you said it, it was an interesting idea, but your comment about how having historic in there might have a developer going, "Oh, geez, I got to..."
Absolutely.
I think if you put Liz's language in, but you don't reference the Heritage Commission, to me, when you put the Heritage Commission, just what Matt said, it says longer time, this is more accomplish, I think we can know that you certainly informally go to the Heritage Commission, say, "Take a look." I mean, I would suggest we go with Liz's language and not go with the Heritage Commission. That would be me.
All right. Any other thoughts on that, Amanda?
Just wanted to, to ask clarification, and the Central Business Performance District also includes Pennacook Village, and we had recommended excluding properties located in CBP and Pennacook from the, eligible from this proposed CUP. Is that, is that something that, is there a reason why that may not have been included or excluded, whichever you want to say?
It's because of how the ordinance actually got drafted, and it talks about a certain section of the Central Business Performance that lies...
Between these streets, yeah.
Between, between these streets, so that's why, yeah, yeah.
So, that, that kind of...
And again, it's impossible currently to see the State House dome from Pennacook.
Right, exactly.
It's running an airplane over Pennacook, which is different.
There's a different, there's a different way of saying the same thing.
You can see it from a 90-foot building.
So, there was one additional issue here in the final paragraph. Matt, I don't know if you've got anything there?
Um, just going back to the historic thought, if you want language in there about historic, I would make it solely within the purview of the board to determine if they believe a building is historically significant or not. I would make no reference to the register, I would make no reference to anything, because, again, thinking about the example of Employment Security, which was probably eligible to be on the National Register potentially, because of who designed it and other, other mid-century modern, certain things like that, but I don't think anybody here, and I might be, make me wrong, but I don't think the loss of that building was probably viewed as, by most of the community, as a negative thing. If so, if you went hard and fast with Liz's language, and you needed something like this for that property, and this is all hypothetical, because that property wasn't eligible anyway, because it has too much front, it's already been redeveloped and it's got too much frontage on State Street, but if you want historic language, the planning board should be the decider, and you should have the latitude to figure out if something is historic, in your opinions, as members of the community, if the property is historically significant or not.
And that was my point, is I wanted, I don't want it to be able to come in and say, "You got nothing, you can't stop this because of this."
Because if the property's on the register, register, or it's eligible for the register, you're automatically out, and, and maybe that's a building that we do want to see rebuilt, you never know, so...
There's an or in there. It's an or. So, I'm not reading it the same way.
The structure to be demolished is not eligible or, or listed on the state or national register of historic places, either individually or a contributing property within a historic district, as determined by a qualified preservation consultant.
Or, that's my, the or, rehabilitation, it constitutes a financial hardship. So, it seems to me, frankly, the way it's drafted, it works. If you're on the historic register, you still can be demolished, because it's doing a financial hardship. And the other thing I was going to say is, I frankly don't think I am, and I don't know if anybody else does, qualified to make the determination of something is historic or not. I mean, I could have an opinion, but I'm not so sure. Earl's historic, but other than that...
You get a vote, though.
But, but I do, but, and then it says, "And the, the results." I actually think you drafted that quite, who, oh, I guess you drafted it, I was giving Matt the compliment. I think the way it's drafted with the or works. Anyway, Matt, I have one more question.
Yep.
Are we talking about everything in there, or just what Liz suggested?
No, everything's available. We're running out of time.
Okay, can I make one comment quick? Let's go to seven. Matt, I read the, and I'm not looking at it here, right now, we have to have at least 10 affordable housing units.
10 housing units.
10 housing units. I thought that was limiting, and I'll tell you why. I thought about, okay, let's just say Mark is doing what he's going to do, but he was going to tear down the CVS building, you're going to have retail on the bottom, and then you were going to have a couple of floors of office, let's say office comes back, and then, you know, above that, somebody might want to do what they were supposed to be doing.
Restaurant.
A restaurant, but also might be doing an artist studio, like at one point, I think they were talking about down there, that building across from the bath place. And, and you know, you might, you might, and you might want to have a maker's space, an entrepreneurial space, like they've got in Manchester. So, there may be legitimate uses that the city wants for the building that does include housing, and having the 10 housing, as much as I'm totally for housing, the 10 housing And, and you know, you might, you might, and you might want to have a maker's space, an entrepreneurial space, like they've got in Manchester. So, there may be legitimate uses that the city wants for the building that does include housing, and having the 10 housing, as much as I'm totally for housing, the 10 housing units would, would require us to deny it. And so, it seemed to me very limiting. So, I would just suggest we take that out. And if the, it seems to me, we have the authority to say, well, gosh, we really love your project, we'd really like for you to have housing in there and not all of this, but I can see projects being denied. I thought, I thought we wanted not, I thought we wanted flexible.
So, if somebody had a project where they had a law firm that was gonna take two or three floors and another whatever, and it was gonna fill up an entire building,
Yeah.
Would they, would they stop the project and not do it, because it says you have to have 10, or would they apply for a variance or a?
Well, they could apply for a variance, but it seems to me, you know, the minute I saw it and thought, oh geez, I gotta apply for a variance, I gotta go through all this stuff, I don't get out of there, I gotta tell myself.
Okay. Thoughts about that?
That was just, that was the other thing that jumped out at me.
I liked it, you're trying to get more housing downtown, that mixed feel to it. You talked about the vibrancy and vitality, having people living, working, whatever. Downtown leads to all those.
Right, but if you look at the Smile Building and the Love Your Neighbor Building and all these other buildings, I mean, they're not the height piece of it.
Yep, and if they came back in today with our housing crisis, we'd probably be pushing them to probably have residential units.
Well, we can push them, so we don't have to, I don't know that we should regulate them.
I mean, as I read it, you'd have to deny it, unless you got to a variance.
They go for a variance.
Without a variance, yeah.
They go for variances for a lot of different things, for uses all over the city.
Any thoughts, Matt? Again, I.
We put it in there because our master plan talks about trying to get more housing downtown, specifically market rate housing. So, we thought that if you're gonna get something extra special by going additional 10 feet, that we would want to see housing there, because that's something that the city is, for the last 20 years, has been trying to encourage downtown, and is finally taking route. I understand what you're saying, Teresa, about concern about it being limiting, but I would hope in a eight or nine-story tall building, that somebody would be able to figure out how to put 10 units in there, which is why we picked 10, to say, okay, we don't want the whole building, or the majority of the building to be residential. We were trying to find a number that we thought could be workable in just about any project, yeah.
I don't, I agree with you that you want to encourage housing. I just didn't want you to limit yourself. Without jumping through, without jumping through hoops.
The only other thing, that last language in the back there, and Liz's final paragraph, that's existing language that, again, was lifted from the existing conditional use permit language for the opportunity corridor district. So, it's the same language that's been in the ordinance, we just cut and pasted it to try and stay consistent. I think what she's asking for is a slightly different verbiage there about the design guide, and if the board wants a design guide in there, then we'll add the design guide, but that's, that's really just the explanation of why the language.
Yeah, so I think if we do the design guide there, and then the other spots that we had asked for it, I think that probably covers us.
And send it to both committees for comment.
And send it to both committees for comment.
Yeah.
Perfect. I think the only other thing that's come up is, there is a requirement that if you are going for the height vary, the height CUP in the CBP district, you have to step the, you have to build to the front lot line, and you have to step it back 65, 10 feet at the 65-foot level. There's language in the, in the ordinance that already talks about that. What we were trying to do is replicate that in this, into the language for the CBP, for the, for the conditional use permit, in case somebody went for a variance to the other language. And if we're gonna be making changes, we might want to take a crack at refining that. There are some buildings in downtown, some of which might be trying to use this, that have dual frontage, some of which people might not think are streets, but they are streets. And, and so, for that reason, if the boards wants to make changes, which it sounds like you do, the staff will probably try and take a crack at that language when, when we come back.
Okay.
When you say, sorry, I was, you say, change it. Are you saying remove the step-back requirement, or make it stronger?
We would probably keep it, but come up with some verbiage about, you must comply with Article 28548G, which is where this language already exists in the ordinance, or we might come up with the concept of a primary frontage, in cases where you have a building that might front on two streets. So, things like that, which was an unintended consequence of how it was drafted.
So, why wouldn't you want it on all streets? I mean, whether you're on the back street with 90 feet, or you're on the front building, road with 90 feet, if there's no step-back.
The requirement right now in the ordinance, separate from the conditional use permit language, is that requirement to go step at 65 only applies to North Main, South Main, Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street Extension, Village Street and Pennacook, believe it or not, Warren Street, School Street, and Store Street.
But it says any building on that street. It doesn't say only the face, the, the primary side of the building facing those streets. It just says at 65. So, I could read that, say, okay, I have a property that my address is Main Street. I gotta step back at 65 feet, not only on Main Street, unless I misunderstood how you read that. It sounded like, these are the streets, if you have frontage on, you must step back at 65 feet. It doesn't clarify only on the side that fronts on that street.
I think it contemplated that most of those properties would only have a front lot line or road frontage on one side, where that's not necessarily the case. So, um, so, it came to staff's attention after the fact, after the ordinance was, was, you know, ratified by the council, that, you know, there might be some unintended consequences of that, and if the board wants to address it, we can modify it, and if you don't, we won't.
Yeah, I think it should be every side of the building, not just limited to the face on Main Street, because it leads to that whole visual character of the skyline. If the building stepped back on all sides, and how you're seeing it across, it's not on this end, looking from 93, it's this big structure. But wow, if you're looking down Main Street, it steps in.
Okay, so, again, open it up, if we are gonna open it up, feel free to take a swing at that.
We'll probably play with that and bring back some language, but you're, you're saying, Jeff, yeah.
Yeah, and, and is 65 still the right number, if we're talking a 90-foot building? There might be another point that we think is a better fit.
Okay. Good?
I think I'm clear, but we're gonna be bringing everything back to the board, and we'll talk about it again, so if I'm not clear, the board will correct me.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, so, 6:30, best laid plans, 30-minute hard stop, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we went 50 minutes instead. Quick little overview on architectural design review. I don't know, Liz, if you wanna hit us with the discussion you and I had regarding the, the original outline of architectural design reviews, goals, and how you guys serve the board, that would be helpful in four minutes.
Uh, yeah. Well, and my fellow committee members, please feel free to jump in. Anne Marie, thank you for sending those two documents. I thought they were very illuminating, the one about the creations, the only ordinance creating architectural design review, and what the, sort of the function of the committee. The overall purpose of the whole process of the committee, we've been around for 45 years, is to provide assistance to the planning board on matters of design review, and then to quote right from this, to maintain high-quality standards of design and appearance. That's a stated city goal. I think we computed that the committee has over 150 years of accumulated professional experience in design and architecture and so forth. And so, we just, there have been a few projects of late that we've had, we've sent comments to, and conditions to the planning board, and I think the planning board has been grappling with what either our intent was, or sort of interpreting what it is that we're trying to accomplish. It seemed helpful to have a chat.
And again, we, we discussed it, I know Liz and I met, and discussed a couple of buildings in particular, and a couple of, of issues in particular, but it's a, it's an important piece from our, our piece of it, you know, what, what you guys are telling us, the information that we're getting back. We want to be developer-friendly, we want to be, you know, a, a city that, that embraces change when it's the right type of change, but not, you know, so rigid that we don't, you can't do this, you can't do this, and, and we don't want a reputation as hard to deal with or, or whatnot. So, there, there's certainly times when the ADR recommendations are completely ignored, or, or, you know, not, not given any credit, but basically, no, I don't think that's right. I think this is what it should be, and whether, we're not architects, we're not design people, but we do have some design, I have some design shops, and we've got some, some folks that can look at something and say, well, that looks good, or that looks good. But going back to the original, uh, or, not the ordinance, but the original structure and the way the organization, the, the organizational documents were set up on what your responsibilities are, I think is important, and I think if we can make sure the planning board sees all those, we understand that, that nothing you do is bound to, to, to us, to be able to, to have to approve it, we can change it, we can take it under advisement, and we can, you know, approve it as you've recommended, or we can approve it with conditions that we put on, or completely ignore them. But I want to understand, and I want to make sure that we have a good working relationship, and I know I've been the person who's thrown a monkey wrench in that in a couple of, a couple of programs. So, I don't know if we've got any thoughts, or, yeah.
Just because of time, is it possible that maybe those documents get sent to us for review? As much as I hate to take up your time, next month, we maybe do a half-hour or 45-minute session to give them enough time to really talk, and give us enough time to look at all those documents, because I haven't seen any of those. And I think it would be helpful for me to understand better what their kind of.
I would like to bat it around and.
Yeah, if that's, and, and rather than try and rush it through tonight and get answers.
I mean, I don't know if it's a next month meeting, or.
Or November, depending on.
Wherever it is, but would that be appropriate?
Um, yeah, I'm willing to do it.
Able to come back at 6, you're thinking 6 or 6:30?
Yeah, let's check, we'll check schedules and make sure that we can do it again, and be able to do a 6 or 6:30. I'd like to have at least a half an hour anyways, probably.
I agree, and it would also be great if our other co-chair, Jay O'Doherty, could be with us.
Yeah, yeah.
And anyone else.
So, why don't we circle back, then? We'll get back through staff, and then get word back to you, and, and we can hash it out and figure that out from there.
That works.
Okay, that work for everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you guys for coming.
Well, thank you so much for inviting us.
See, we did get done by 7:00.
You know, you're welcome any, any Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, you're more than welcome.
Before the place fills up.
One Wednesday a month.
It's usually standing room only. Thanks again. Yeah, let's have a motion to adjourn. I don't know, we didn't open a public hearing. Yeah, we did. So, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Well, you didn't take a roll call or anything.
We didn't do anything.
I second, and, well, yes.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
We are adjourned, so we can. Steve, Mike, Steve, Mike. All right, let's, let's call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Condo Dimont Traki, present. Fox?
Here.
Hicks?
Yeah.
Pierce?
Here.
Rosenberg?
Here.
Santa Cruz?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Woodfin?
Here.
I guess we're just feeling a little wild.
Savage.
All right, so, uh, we have a quorum, and we will open the meeting. First item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the August 21st Planning Board meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
I will abstain if I was not here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Santa Cruz and Pierce.
Keep calling counselor. Santa Cruz and Pierce have abstained for the record. Quick agenda overview for all of you out there in the audience. We have quite a few items on the agenda that will not be, not be hit tonight, so do take note. First item on the agenda, 7A, 7B, 9C, and 9D have all been requested to be continued to our October 16th Planning Board meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to continue those meetings to our October meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item 9A, we will, we will, that has been continued to the November 20th meeting of the planning board. Would someone like to make a motion to continue item 9A to our November 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Just for the record, that is, sorry, I was struggling trying to find it, 391 Cha, uh, Loudon Road, which is the Chapel Tractor Building, and again, for the record, item 7A was 10 Merchant's Way for a major site plan. 7B was 20 South Main Street as a major subdivision. 9C was a minor site plan for 72 Manchester Street at the Red Blazer. 9D was 80 Store Street, Burlington Co-Factory, right?
Yes.
Okay, and one more item that will be pulled off the agenda tonight, which is item 9B, conditional use permit for 254 North State Street, was withdrawn by the applicant, so no action is needed by the board. You good? Okay, yes?
There's right thing left.
There's not a lot left, so.
Can we do item 8A and go home?
So, we've got design review applications by consent, and again, for the audience here, designer view applications by consent, if anybody has any concerns or questions regarding items 5A through 5K, and I don't believe any of those were pulled, please make yourself known. If not, any member of the board have any items under the consent agenda that they'd like to pull for discussion? No? So, would someone like to make a motion to approve items 5A through 5K as submitted with architectural design review recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and that brings us on to design applications by consent. Item 6A, Victoria Pollard of Foxfire Property Management on behalf of Bindery Redevelopment LLC requests approval for a one-year extension, the architectural design approval to install a Concord Coach exhibit into the sidewalk in front of 45 South Main Street in the Central Performance District. Any thoughts or concerns regarding that? If not, I'll make a motion to, go ahead.
Just quickly, I want to, Anne Marie, for sending us the correspondence.
Yes, very helpful.
That's a great change that has really expedited this process.
Very helpful, and helps us understand why and what the decisions are. So, I'll let you make a motion to extend it, if you'd like. let you make a motion to extend it if you'd like.
Sure, I will make that motion.
And I'll second.
All right, so we got a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that is item 6. That brings us on to determination of completeness by consent. Again, so 7A, 7B, and 7C?
Nope, 7C is-
Is on.
Is on.
All right, so we will move to item 7C. If we could read that into the record. Oh, no, this is consent, right? Okay, so 7C, I got to read these. She makes me read these. So, Granite Engineering LLC on behalf of Pitco Filator requests approval for a, for an amendment to a major site plan approval for certain waivers from the site plan regulations, a conditional use permit for a, for a use of an aquifer protection, district community water systems protection area, and a conditional use permit for the construction of fewer parking spaces for a 356,224 square foot industrial building and associated site improvements at 15 Integra Drive in the Office Park Performance, the OFP District, Industrial IN District, and the Open Space Residential District. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that amendment to a major, oh, grant the waiver?
To determine it complete.
To determine it complete, sorry.
And a development of regional impact.
So, it is a determination of completeness and a development of regional impact. So, staff has determined that the application is complete, a development of regional impact. Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for?
At the bottom, there's a recommendation which will state also why it's a development of regional impact.
Do we need to tell them that?
Through 11, 11.063 of the site plan regulations for its proximity to aquifers, surface waters, and other resources that transcend municipal batteries.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm looking for a motion?
I'd like a motion.
Okay, I move it.
Second.
We good? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
You didn't actually state, are we-
Motion was to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for?
That's the part you missed. That's why, that's the part-
So, does your, does your motion still stand?
Oh, yeah.
And you're second?
No, I'm an arthromed. No, I'm good.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm distant bull.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us out of our consent agenda items to our public hearing, which is 8A.
So, I will read that into the record and I will give a brief update and overview. Tom Sajak and Hayner Swanson, Inc., on behalf of Stickney Avenue LLC, request approval for an amendment to a major site plan approval to move precedent condition two to subsequent conditions as a new subsequent condition six. Site is addressed at 5 through 13 Stickney Avenue in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District. The reasoning behind this request originally had to do with videoing and lining of pipes, which needed to take place prior to issuance of building permits. And after much negotiation, meeting on site, conferences with staff, many hours spent in on both sides, an agreement has been reached. Yay!
Hallelujah!
And the easement documents and the easement plan will be recorded tomorrow morning. The plan set is sitting right there, ready for Rich's signature. They did not officially withdraw the application since the board opened it and last time closed it, continued it to this hearing. You can, my recommendation would be to deny it. Yeah, deny.
To deny the application?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody clear on what's happening? This is the Stickney-
No idea. You just, I know what project it is, but you just said you came to an agreement. Now, we're talking about denying it. So, I am confused.
Because the precedent condition was to complete all of those items before we would
Correct, so what is the-
Move forward with a building permit.
Okay, so we're not going to discuss what the agreement was?
Well, so, the pipes are being lined, the videoing is complete, the pipes are being lined.
Okay, so all the stuff we asked to do-
The future easement was put into place.
They were asking for it.
It will be recorded, and the building permits will be issued with a no-go zone next to a 10-foot either side of the pipes so that they can proceed with the interior that they need to do without the pipelining because it's going to be about five to six weeks to get the pipelining completed. Once that's completed in that area, then the no-go zone will go away.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what the agreement was, that, why we were doing what we were doing.
Good question.
Is the developer fully expecting this denial this evening?
Because they don't need it anymore.
They don't need it.
Because they came to the agreement. That's what I was having a hard time understanding. That's why I needed that explanation.
And again, this is the one where we had somebody that wasn't here and we didn't want to do it, so we tabled it for the next one. Matt?
Anne Marie's summary was excellent. The only thing I would note is these were the existing historic drains that, one of 150 years old, the other one's 100 years old, that go underneath the buildings that the developers renovate into apartments. And then the other part of the agreement that's important for the board to recognize is the developer has also voluntarily given us an additional easement on the property. So, someday when it's time to replace the drain lines that go underneath the building, we won't have to do that. We will replace them so they are not underneath the building, which will make life easier for all parties, so.
That's the same, that's the same type and vintage of pipe failed on the 93 a few years ago.
I would like to make a motion to deny 8A, which is the application by Tom Sajak and Hayner Swanson on behalf of Stickney Avenue LLC. What's that? A public hearing? Did we open a public hearing?
We did at the very beginning, didn't you?
I'll second it.
We'll close the public hearing and I'll make that motion that we deny this application. We got a second by Earl. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That brings us on to nine.
To state the findings of fact.
Findings of fact for item 8A, where the information that we received in our packets last month, when we had the information, reviewed the information at the public hearing and then tabled it for this meeting, so.
Testimony received by staff.
Testimony received by staff and the information in our packet. Perfect, thank you. Let's, 9A, was that one of the ones we deleted? Yes, 9A was out.
It's continued.
9B is continued.
There's nothing left except-
Continued 9D.
9D is continued.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Other business? Do you have any other business?
This is unbelievable.
Mr. Chairman, I just do have one. I know we discussed a few months back about changing the time.
Yep.
Whatever happened with that discussion. I know I've been gone for a couple months.
Yeah, we had a, we had a little bit of, unfortunately, I think we probably need to leave it at seven unless there's overwhelming support for 6 o'clock. It was more indifferent, hard to get here for a couple of folks. I know David, I know you said it was hard to get here.
I said I could make arrangements if I knew that's what the board voted is the majority.
I come, I come from Guilford every day and it was a little difficult today to get down 106. I can imagine in the summer sometimes it'll be a, a big change.
Okay, that's, I just, not having kind of been proven, I just want to double check.
Believe me, I'd like to do earlier and get home, but I could, we got home at 16 tonight if we'd started, so.
I do, I do appreciate the, the discussion, and I think it was because we've gone through a string of really long meetings that I think it was, it was like, it was tough there for a little while.
I agree, I agree. All right, so with that, if there's no other, if there's no other business, we have a motion to adjourn.
A second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.
That is the record.
That is a record. That is a record.